Okay, we'll call it to order this July the 24th, 2019, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call?
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Right.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
President.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd all stand, join us in a pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that'll be led by Ken Borton of the Church of Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow and pray with me. Almighty God, our Father in heaven, we come to you this morning in a word of prayer and a word of thanks. Appreciate the good weather that you've blessed us with now, and we thank you for all the blessings of life you give us, the many, many ways in which you see to our various needs. This time, we want to thank you and appreciate the efforts of these men and women from our county who are striving to make our county a better place to live, a better place to inhabit. And we thank you for their devotion, we thank you for their efforts, appreciate their willingness to share their time and energy and effort towards the betterment of our citizenry and the betterment of our county. We thank you, Father, for your blessings upon the county and upon our state, upon our great nation, and we pray for their just and impartial leadership and guidance, patience, and encouragement as we go through this process. We pray that the concerns of the citizenry will be heard with respect and honor, and we pray that the citizenry will as well respect and honor the leaders and the directors here that are serving them in an effort to make our county a safer and better place to live. We just thank you for all the blessings of life you give us, Father. We pray your continued blessings upon us here in our city, county, state, and nation, and we just ask that you guide us in the decisions that are made and the concerns that are voiced in Christ, and we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, that'll take us to correspondence and organizational business. Right quick, we have a couple items listed in this that will need a motion and voted on, so we're gonna move them down to items of business. It'd be the two items after Kerry gives us an update on the Franklin County Conservation District.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, our quarterly update, we're getting into the fourth or third quarter already, but wanted to give you an update for the second quarter. Since I was here in April, we have been extremely busy. April 1st marked 18 years that I've been with the Conservation District, and honestly, we're busier now than we've ever been, looking back. I'm amazed how much the job has changed with the technologies, both at our office and in agriculture. The programs and services that we administer continue to evolve to meet the ever-changing demands of the population we serve. Soil health, water quality, erosion control, and wildlife habitat are all important factors of daily life here in Franklin County, and we continue to reach more and more residents with our programs and services. We had more phone calls and walk-in inquiries this spring with the record rainfall, people indicating erosion on their land was bad, and they wanted to do something about it but didn't know where to start. Whether they were dealing with a washed-out pond dam, runoff through their yard that was flooding a basement, or erosion from a field that was washing out part of a driveway or even the edge of a county road, to the Meridasean River creating major stream bank stabilization issues. The inquiries were extensive. At my house, we logged 22 and 3/4 inches of rain from April 1st to June 30th, and like most people in the county, you could see the impacts that that rain had on the farm fields and county roads. And while the flooding and erosion was bad, I had many conversations with residents that included the statement. Imagine how much worse it would have been without all the conservation measures that the district has helped implement in our 18, in our 78 years of service. If we still farmed like we did in 1930, 22 inches of rain and runoff would have had even worse impacts than what we saw. Aside from dealing with the rain, we had a lot of other projects going on as well. On April 17th, the Conservation District hosted the 15th Annual Franklin County Earth Festival. This event brought 162 6th and 7th graders from Central Heights, Wellsville, and West Franklin to the Franklin County Fairgrounds for a day of, full of hands-on environmental education. Students rotated through 10 lessons, all of which focused on environmental science topics in line with state standards. We had presenters from Quail Forever, K-State Research and Extension, Kansas Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service, Kansas Department of Wildlife, Parks, and Tourism, the Kansas Corn Commission, and the Hillsdale Watershed Coalition, and three neighboring county conservation districts. The students learned about habitat, recycling, soil and water jeopardy, soil profiles, erosion, geology, local wildlife management, water quality, and water sampling during the day. Also related to environmental education, I assisted with the Kansas State Envirothon at Camp Wood, which is west of Strong City, where we had 15 high schools from across the state participate in the event. The team from Manhattan High won, and they actually leave this Saturday to represent Kansas out in North Carolina at the National Envirothon. I presented a soil lesson to 365th graders at the Miami County Earth Festival, and in mid-May, I was able to help the Hillsdale Water Coalition with two string sampling days at tributaries that drain into Hillsdale Lake. The students had done classroom projects to learn how to do water quality testing, and when onsite at the lake, they were given kick nets and water sampling kits to conduct tests and experiments in the field. They learned that the presence of different macroinvertebrates give us indicators on water quality. I also participated in the Kansas Association of Conservation District's Employees Organization Summer Statewide Training in Hays, and during that meeting, I was asked to give a presentation to 88 county employees on how to reach a broader audience with our conservation message through websites and other social media platforms. I represented Franklin County at the Meridasean Regional Advisory Committee meeting, which was held in early June here in Ottawa at City Hall, and assisted with planning a soil health workshop, which was cosponsored by the Regional Advisory Committee in July in Pomona. We logged 139 volunteer hours during the second quarter, assisting with our Earth Day Festival and clerical assistance in the office. We worked directly with K-State Research and Extension to fund 36 soil tests during the second quarter, and as I already noted, the weather, of course, was a concern, and that really slowed down our field work. On a normal year, whatever you want to consider as normal, which was not this year, we're able to do quite a bit of field work after the winter weather has moved on but before spring planning, and that certainly was not the case this year. We were able to implement six acres of monarch habitat establishment, 23 acres of range seeding, which converted cropland over to native grass, and we completed one grass-waterway and one terrace project. The total value of these completed projects was $20,250. We're hopeful that the field conditions are ideal after fall harvest to allow for many remaining projects under contracts to still be completed. In late May, we received approval notice of just over $116,000 worth of equip contracts for 11 Franklin County landowners. Those are administered directly through our office, and these contracts include funding for on-the-ground conservation practices to address water quality, soil erosion, and timber stand improvement. On June 17th, Farm Service Agency notified 28 Franklin County landowners that they had grassland acres that are eligible for the new Grassland Conservation Initiative. Within four days, we had six producers who had come in, and we accepted applications for their acreage totaling 217 acres and just short of $20,000 worth of payments over the next five years. The program application period just wrapped up last Friday, and we had several more applications that came in after the 1st of July for this quarter. On June 24th, we received notification of funding for cover crops to be planted on ground that was unable to be planted this spring due to the extreme rainfall. We processed application for the flood recovery cover crop program on 65 acres within the first week and are up to 589 acres so far, and the application period ends up, or wraps up this Friday. The Conservation Board meets monthly, and during those meetings, they were able to review and approve 12 conservation plans for local landowners and eight highly erodible land determinations as part of conservation compliance for program eligibility. None of this work would be possible without the funds we receive exclusively through the county and the Kansas Water Plan, so thank you for funding that allows us to promote and implement conservation here in Franklin County. Any questions?
You've been busy.
We have. I meet myself coming and going, so, yeah.
Kerry, the county declares a disaster area. How does that affect your office for securing funding or something for?
So, the disaster declaration allowed us to promote that cover crop program. For example, Miami County was not included in the governor's disaster declaration, so the landowners over there aren't eligible for the cover crop payments. So that was the one direct benefit that we saw. I checked with Kansas Department of Ag several times early May when the declarations started coming out and they were adding counties. We had a lot of phone calls asking about, you know, terrace ends that need repaired and pond dams. I can't tell you how many. We started to keep track about halfway through the process and probably had 25 or 30 calls in six weeks on pond erosion issues, and we're working on one that's classified as a significant hazard structure with the state and trying to get some repair work done on that. It is just north of a pretty main county road for us. So, as far as funding for repair work, unfortunately, there was not any. We checked with the state several times. I know the county, through emergency management, worked with FEMA and received some funding. And on structures, as far as ponds, watershed-type structures, they had to be what they call a high-hazard classification, and fortunately, we didn't have any that were in that situation that had damage needing repaired after the flooding. So, we had a little bit of benefit, but we could've used a lot more, but that's always the case with all of our programming. Several people have come in and asked about funding for the terraces, and a lot of the ones that need repair work, a significant amount of work, are old enough that they can sometimes be classified as new construction, and so we try to run them through one of our two new construction programs, but again, it's a waiting game. The money's not ever there when the landowner's walking the door, so we're working on it. It's keeping us busy, but we didn't see a huge increase in funding.
More questions for Kerry? Kerry, thank you for the-
Thank you. Head back to the office. Thanks, guys.
Okay, that'll take us to public comment. We do have someone signed up. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Paola? Just come up and state your name and address for the commission.
Could you jump on the pronunciation? My name is Paola Larkon. I didn't get what you said about the personnel matters.
Right. Comments, we don't take comment on personnel matters.
Okay. Well, then, I'm not sure how this will go, but I'll read this, and stop me if I start interfering in any of that, okay? My name is Paola Larkon, and I have been a Franklin County resident for four years. My husband Brian and I moved along, moved here along with our five kids from Ford County so that I could be a police officer at the Ottawa Police Department in 2015. We moved to a rental home in 3929 Sand Creek Road. There, we met Charles, who we call Red, and his wonderful wife Nancy, who lived in 3948 Sand Creek Road, sitting over there. The Gilliams started off as neighbors, then friends, and are now like family. They're children's adopted grandparents, you might say. Once we were able to sell our house in Ford County, we started looking to purchase a home, when Nancy approached us with the idea of moving in on their land by replacing trailer number three. Is there any way I can show you guys this so you know what I'm talking about?
Sure.
Yeah? She approaches with the idea of moving in their land by replacing trailer number three on their lot. They have three trailers, as you can see in the picture. She said they were getting older and their health was not as well. To protect their health privacy, I will not go into detail, but they are approaching their 80s. They stated that they needed help maintaining their 20 acres. They also said that they would feel safer knowing we would be across the yard in case of any emergencies. Not only that, but Red also stated that it would bring him peace of mind knowing we are there with Nancy because he believes he will be the first to pass away. We were all in it 100% and had picked out a 2019 model to be moved there. However, Red was told by Mr. Larry Walron, I might be mispronouncing his name, from Franklin County Building Zoning that he was not allowed to replace any of the mobile homes, ever. Red was told this was due to a lack of frontage. However, Red has stated that the driveway, which can be seen in the pictures, is included in the deed, and I have a copy of the deed that says so too. There are water meters, electric meters, and septic tanks that were all paid for by the Gilliams on this land. They have owned this land since 1991 and have paid their taxes every year. These Navy veterans were not asking for much. They are asking to replace a 1974 mobile home with a new one so that a family can move in, help them out, and enjoy life alongside them. In the Franklin County zoning regulations website, it states that the regulations are set to promote health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the citizens of Franklin County. At the moment-
Mr. and Mrs. Gilliam, do you feel those are being met?
I would feel safer if you guys were there. Paola? All I have is half a minute, so we're-
Okay. We ask that you look into our case and see if you can help us out, or we trust that you guys make the right decision, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a copy of the deed if you want to just look at it really quick.
I don't think-
Or you might not have time.
I don't think we need to see that right now.
Here's your pictures.
Thank you. Anyone else sign up on public comment? Okay, that'll take us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda today that need considered and approved will be the county commission minutes for July the 17th meeting and the study station minutes for July the 22nd, 2019. There's no tax change orders or claim vouchers, so with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, takes us now to items of business. The first item today to be considered will be a request for free dumpster use for the Power of the Past event on September the 13th to the 15th, 2019. David?
You guys, I'm David Reeves, the president of the Power of the Past, and we'll be having our 25th show September 13th, 14th, and 15th down here at Forest Park this year. And we're asking for free dump fees or waive the fees for our trash that we have. I believe it's Ottawa Sanitation's gonna have dumpsters there, and we'll probably have a couple of dumpster fulls that will be brought out on Monday after our show, and we, you guys have done this before, we appreciate it, all that kind of stuff helps us keep having our show every year. This year, well, last year was a very poor show. It rained practically the whole time, but this year, we are featuring Ford tractors and Kussman engines, and we're hoping this is a good show. Next year, we're gonna have a national show again. It will be the Massey Expo in North America, featuring Massey Harris and Massey Ferguson tractors. It should be very big. We've got, this people, they've never had their national shows this far south and west, and so they're all excited because they think they'll draw a lot more people in. And then you guys have helped us out through the Visitors Bureau, helping sponsor our show. We get some money from that, and somewhere's on your flyer, it's listed that they are cosponsors of our show. So, I guess what I'm really asking is just to waive the dump fees for the 2019 Power of the Past Tractor Show.
It's something we've done every year since I've been here, I know, and is there any questions on this? If not, I would look for a motion to approve waiving the dumpster fees for the September 13th, 15th, 2019 Power of the Past event.
Motion to approve.
Are motions or a second?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two, the, the Over the Road Gang is requesting us to, for use of the courthouse lawn on September the 21st, 2019. They're requesting also to waive the landfill fees, and they're requesting to waive tourism building fees for the car show registration.
Ralph Finch, I'm representing the Over the Road Gang, and we appreciate everything the county's doing for us, and I'll just, he's already said what we're asking for, so I guess that's about it. I mean, last year, we had 1,900, 1,900 and some cars. In the past, when we were about half as big as we are now, they said it brought over $4 million into the tourist, to the county. We appreciate all the help you guys give us, and we hope everything goes good this year. And so, if you can consider this, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I know we've waived the landfill fees and the use of the courthouse lawns, not been an issue. Have we waived the tourism building fee before?
No, you have not. Last year was the first time we've ever paid it.
What is, what was that amounted to?
$5. We gave them a nonprofit rate of $5 an hour. We had some of their $5:30 in the morning to open.
It's also listed, help sponsor downtown promotions at $300?
They aren't asking for that.
Yeah, we, no, we don't need that.
It's on there.
It's on there, so that's why we wondered. We thought he dismissed it.
It's on the agenda, but I was advised before that the request for that $1 promotion thing, they're not gonna request, so that's why that wasn't brought up. Any question on this? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve the use of the courthouse lawn, the waiving the landfill fees, and the waiving the tourism building fee for the car show.
I'd be happy to make the motion to approve.
Have a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Stain.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Man, and-
Thank you.
Okay, takes us to item number three. It'll be considering approved the KPCCI agreement for $15,050 for the Health Department Director. Midge is gonna tell us about this.
Yes, good morning. We are glad to have the opportunity to continue our work in substance abuse prevention. This particular grant is sponsored through Kansas Department of Aging and Disability. It's just a small grant, $15,050. It's, the budgeting will go to assisting, helping pay for Rob Walker's wages as he works on this. It's a collaborative planning grant with other substance, with the committee throughout the county to determine what next steps should be. Applying and getting this grant sets us up for training, but also following the first year, the opportunity to apply for actually, for implementation funds to take some preventive or intervention-type programming down the road. So, I just would be glad to answer any questions I can about this, or appreciate being able to accept this grant.
Questions on this? Sounds pretty cut and dried.
I think.
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll look for a motion to approve the agreement with KPICI for the $15,050 grant.
So, move.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, item number four, consider approval of Hoydell, is that right? Change order for the Public Works Fuel Island and Above Ground Fuel Storage Tank Project in the amount of $42,469.53. David?
Commissioners, last year, you're all aware that we had an accident at the Fuel Island that caused a couple of our lines to break, which caused fuel spill. On December 5th, the commission, you all elected to replace the above-ground fuel storage tanks with, currently, the tanks that we had are single-wall, in fact, all the piping is single-wall. None of it meets code today. At the December 5th meeting, you all elected to replace the two fuel tanks that we have currently with new double-walled, I believe they're both 12,000-gallon tanks, and as a part of that, Hoydell submitted a bid to do that work. Their initial bid was over $92,000, but we looked at it, and we were able to do some of the work ourselves, which reduced that down to about $86,000. But work related to that at the Fuel Island itself, and some of the underground, there's a transition sump and a dispenser sump that need to be replaced along with this project. And so, the additional $42,000 is to bring our entire system up to codes today. Everything, the, the lines will all be double-walled, which will help prevent, you know, future problems. The sumps will be replaced. Those sumps are basically enclosed connection lines where we can get in there and do any work. It also helps to capture any, any fuel that happens to, you know, if we have loose connections at those connection points, those underground sumps help protect all that. So, we're proposing that we do this change order to make sure that our system from, we're gonna use our existing pumps, but everything from those pumps to the new tanks, all of it will be brand-new, along with the electrical, which is kind of a niche, niche service, so those fees are kind of expensive, but we feel strongly that having a new system from the pumps to the tanks is worthwhile, and hopefully is something that we never have to address again, or at least not for a considerable amount of time.
What will this come out of, Derek?
I think it could come out of any number of options. It could come out of, I suspect, we could take it out of our Public Works budget, or we could take it out of one of our capital reserve funds, so all three funds are certainly in good enough shape to absorb it, so.
Commissioners, I will tell you that we are in, in communication with K-Camp. We feel, at least on our side, that some of this might be covered under that accident claim, and so we are providing them information and working with them to hopefully have some of this, this fee covered. I just don't have the confirmation yet and those details to let you know for sure, but we are hopeful that we get some of this back in insurance.
I would say it's substantially likely that we do, so I don't think we're gonna end up paying the $42,000. We'll pay, you know, a chunk of that, but K-Camp, I think, will, will also kick in, so.
If we approve this, what kind of timeframe are we-
If we approve this, what kind of timeframe are we looking? I know they, people are like, we need this.
Yeah, we, we met with Hoydale about a month ago, and they indicated that they've got the tanks on-site, so they're ready to go as far as that. So they felt like they had an opening in mid to late August to begin the installation process. And we're gonna, we're gonna do a little pad work, and, and we've already laid the existing tanks down and, and got them off of the site. And so we are working with them to help out. What happens next is they'll have one of their subs come in and build a pad and do some of the underground in preparation for this.
This is the way the solid waste capital fund is through statutes. It's very limited on what we can spend it on, but if only a portion of this, maybe we potentially write a check for. That fund has a good balance, it's just very limited use is what we could. I would think maybe the proportionate amount of users that are from those departments could be determined, and at least their portion could be paid for out of that.
Oh, yeah, well, and we'll absolutely do that, because that, we do. I mean, some of our equipment out there is fueled by this pump, so I, I would say that's perfectly legal and appropriate. So K-CAM, we anticipate, we'll pay a portion, we'll take a portion out of the solid waste fund, and then Janet and I'll sit down with David, and we'll decide the remainder, whether that's his budget, his proper budget, or one of our reserve funds. But by then, I'm not sure it's gonna be, you know, a substantial amount, so.
Any more questions for, on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve, for the approval of Hoydale change order for the Public Works Fuel Island and Above Ground Fuel Storage Tank Project in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Commissioners, before you vote on that, I want to clarify that we have a contract with Hoydale for eighty-six thousand, and this forty-two thousand is in addition to that. I just wanna, I'm not sure I clarified that before, I just want to make sure that you're aware.
It's in the motion, this change order for that. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the change order?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, Jim.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to item number five. Public Works Fuel Island, Kansas Department of Health and Environment Remediation Project, consideration of a proposal from Knightley Environmental Incorporated to conduct a limited site assessment for the existing fuel storage tank site at the Public Works yard.
Commissioners, this is obviously related to the last item. Back in early October of last year, when this incident occurred, one of the very first things that, that Public Works did was contact KDHE to alert them of this situation. Say that this process has been slow and, and would be an understatement. We've submitted the information, and there was a deductible and an application that we submitted. I forget the exact dates on that, but it was months ago. KDHE recently, finally solicited bids to do the environmental remediation. That, that process finally occurred, and that Knightley Environmental was the, the low bid on that. And so what the limited site assessment is gonna do, there's some information in your, in your packet that kind of spells it out, but they are, they're going to do some soil samples, they will probably install some monitoring wells, and some things along those lines. And the total price of that is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. That entire amount is gonna be covered by the State of Kansas Trust Fund that is in place to handle these sort of remediation activities. The application that we submitted months ago was to be approved for that, we were. So this entire amount is gonna be covered by the trust fund. It will be a pass-through expense. KDHE handled the bid, bid process. There were a number of consultants that, that submitted responses. Knightley was the, I assume, the low bid and met the criteria, so KDHE has awarded them. What we'd like to do is, we have to execute the contract with Knightley, and then Knightley will work with us, and, and we will be the intermediary, so to speak. So we would like to initiate that contract so that we can get them out on-site and working as soon as possible.
We gonna sign the limited power of attorney they propose, so they can build KDHE directly, or?
That's, and that's certainly an option for the board. I don't see a downside in doing that. I mean, it's, it takes something off of our plate, so.
Yeah, we can do it however you would like.
I didn't know if that's something we do or not.
Will the remediation process affect timeline? Do they have to do theirs, what they do before you can do what you do?
And, and when we visited with Hoydale, that was one of the questions that we asked. And they work on these types of things all over Kansas. And, and they assured us that nothing that we were gonna do related to the reconstruction activities would negatively impact any remediation processes. And so we, we feel confident in, in moving forward.
And I spoke with KDHE about this some time ago, and, and part of, it's not to say they haven't been responsive, but this hasn't been a huge priority, because in the grand scheme of the things that they deal with, this is not. I mean, this was not a substantial leak in any way, shape, or form. I mean, it is something that we have to work through with them, but it's, you know, on the severity scale, it's not high at all. And so, and David said this perfectly, but this, you know, you're signing a contract for thirty-three thousand, and I would sign the power of attorney just so that it, it makes the process more efficient, but not a dime of this will end up being paid for with tax dollars. It's, it's truly just a function, and so.
No more questions? We'd look for a motion executing the contract with Knightley Environmental Incorporated in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents to conduct a Kansas Department of Health and Environment Limited Site Assessment.
I had one more question, Rick. Before we vote on this, there'll still be another expense once this assessment's done, either to either dig up the dirt and get it hauled off, or something like that, once it's done?
We've, we believe, and we have been led to believe, that the amount of material that needs to be removed is so small that we might be able to essentially dry it out on-site and not have to remove it from the site.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve this contract with Knightley.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to staff reports. Derek?
Just a couple of things. Last week, and David could probably talk about this more, but David and I, along with Alan and Tom Winter, met with the state of Kansas to discuss the process for applying for and receiving federal funds pursuant to our disaster declaration. This is something that we are really prioritizing, given that, you know, we, we think we'll have probably at least a couple hundred thousand dollars, if not more. And so that was the first step of the process. Learned a lot more about what needs to be done, and we're, we're gonna work to be among the first to apply, because not only are there dozens of counties in Kansas, and the entire Midwest has had a rough season. And so the sooner we can get the application in, the more thorough our application is, of course, the quicker it'll be processed, and the less likelihood that they're gonna kick it back to us and say, oh, you guys need to include this as well. And so hopefully, we can, it's still gonna be a long process, but hopefully, we'll, we'll be among the first to get through that. Budget-wise, budget is largely completed. Janet has prepared the publication notice, and I'm quite sure has sent it over. She can tell you when it's set to run, but the last thing we're gonna do is, the two of us will conduct what I call our final review, and then we'll have the budget before you at the budget hearing. In terms of, you know, comprehensive breakdowns, I mean, as you know, we do that at the budget study sessions, so absent questions from the public, I wouldn't anticipate a super-thorough breakdown, because you guys have all seen that, we've been through that. And then, now that we've gotten through the budget, one of the things that we're gonna do, and, and I'll sit down with Brandon and probably Janet, we're gonna start creating a plan for tackling our capital needs. You know, we talk all the time about, you know, our reserve balances and how they've grown, and we've talked over the last few months about, you know, several of the needs we have. And I think, now that we have a little more time, putting an actual plan in place with dates, target dates, I will have Brandon get quotes now on what all of it's gonna cost. That way, we can, you know, we can really create a schedule, and that will allow Janet and I to make sure the reserve balance stays at an amount we're comfortable with, but it will also ensure that we've got a fairly aggressive plan of tackling these. And so that's something we hope to work pretty extensively on in the next couple of weeks. And of course, that's, you know, that is something that will be brought to you, and will be, you know, it's not a commitment of any kind of funds, per se, but we certainly want your feedback on that. So I would look for that to be on a study session here coming up for discussion. That's all I have today.
Chair?
We made it through the fair, and we didn't have too many real incidents out there. As far as from our perspective, as far as a budget impact, we had no impact to our budget. Most of our, our staff that we had out there was either already on duty, salary personnel, and then our volunteer reserve and posse forces. So, so that, that was a good thing, and I think it went, it went very well for us. I talked previously about some of the training that we've had, and just to let you know, this last week, we did host the, some anti-human trafficking training, and we had members of the FBI Task Force and the State Advisory Committee that came in to do that training. It was a very good, very good training. I had a lot of sheriff office staff that attended that. I think just about everyone from JDC attended that, and then we had a couple people from, from Wellsville PD as well, so, so that was a good thing. And then, also this week, we are hosting for the state a, some advanced DUI training. And so if you see a lot of troopers that are parked at the office or something, that's what that was for yesterday, and then we're gonna be doing that again tomorrow. And that is, in conjunction with the county attorney's office, has played a big role in getting that here as, as, as well. So, other than that, Commissioner Howard, we're at fifty-four in the jail, as of, as of this morning. So it goes back and forth. We went up into the high sixties over the weekend because of, because of weekend court commit. Part of our numbers have fluctuated the way they have because there's been some changes in the court, and they are sentencing more people to some court commit time on weekends. For depending on the, on the offense, it's a good thing, because it allows them to be able to continue their work Monday through Friday, and then they're, and they're able to get their time served. And so that's, that's better for the, for those people, their employer and their family, obviously. So that's kind of why some of those numbers have been kind of goofy lately, but I think it's all, that's all probably really good, good reasons for that, so.
So you have several of them out cleaning up the fairgrounds today, right?
No, no. We don't. So, are there any questions for me?
Bitch, you got some more good news for us?
Of course. I'm saving the good news for a couple weeks when I get a new, yeah, we got another grant, but I'll tell you about that another day. Back in May, at the Board of Health meeting, towards the end of the meeting, I brought up possible training for health and all policies as an option. And the discussion led me to believe that you were considering something this fall for a county-wide meeting, summit, something of that nature. So I just wanted to check with you to see if you wanted us to go forward, if you had an, in arranging for that training, if you'd thought about a date, a time period, and what your thoughts were on, on that.
How long of a, what are you thinking, all day, or half a day, or multiple days?
I would probably say not multiple days for the training. And, and I think it, I haven't asked KHI what they typically do, but usually, it's a few hours to really get the feel for it and do some discussion and things like that. But I would, I would suppose it's dependent upon what you desire, what you want to do, and how big of a group if we're inviting. I know in the past, sometimes you've done, there've been the summit where city commissioners and school board, school members and all that have been invited and participated, which I thought was a really great opportunity for everybody to work together. So that might change things, you know, if you have sixty people versus five or six, so. It depends on what you think you'd like to, to do.
I'm pretty sure they probably still mailing lists from the past, you know, Paul County and outside even invited several of the other counties around, and they wouldn't send over two or three people, but it may be somebody from their health department, or their administration, or we had a couple county commissioners from other counties. They didn't send a bunch of people over, but they would send two or three people over to kind of enlighten the rest with us all for an education.
I don't see, go ahead and go forward with it, get us more information on it and stuff.
You want me to kind of plan it and cost it and bring that back as a?
I think that'd be a good idea, so.
Yeah, better idea what it is, probably easier to place it somewhere in a schedule.
Okay, probably later fall, maybe?
Yeah, I would say.
I'll put something together for you.
All right. Thanks, bitch. Susan? David?
Okay, as, as Eric mentioned, we met with KDEM last week. One of the takeaways from that meeting, for me anyway, that was extremely beneficial. My understanding of the flood process last time around, from a few years ago, we worked directly with FEMA. And FEMA sent folks from all over the country that are not from Kansas, aren't familiar with Kansas roads, and, and our circumstances. They came in from outside of the state to evaluate the whole process. This time around, we are gonna be working directly with the Kansas Department of Emergency Management folks. So we will be working with fellow Kansans to submit our applications, to review our application before it is sent to FEMA. And so they assured us that as we submit information, they will let us know if there is something deficient about that application process, so that we have an opportunity to correct any, any shortcomings before it goes off to FEMA. So I feel a lot more confident about the process. That's not to say that once it gets to FEMA, that it still may not be, you know, we still may be rejected, but the fact that we were gonna have some, another party review that and work hand-in-hand with us to make sure that our application is solid is very comforting. Related to that, kind of on the other side of the coin, so FEMA takes care of our, all of our secondary roads and bridges and infrastructure. The Federal Highway Administration through KDOT handles all of our FAS routes, our- The, the Federal Highway Administration through KDOT handles all of our FAS routes, our, our major blacktops and those sorts of things. We have representatives from KDOT that are actually gonna be down this afternoon to, with our staff, to view Idaho Road, Colorado Road, Virginia, Vermont, and some others, so that they get a firsthand look at the damage that has occurred. And so that is, that's another positive thing. We haven't started fully construction on Idaho Road, so they will be able to see firsthand the challenge that, that, that we've got ahead of us on that, and be able to, you know, hopefully, whenever that application comes across their desk, it'll be, you know, they're just gonna send it on, and we'll get refunded for that. Related to Idaho Road, we are gonna start, in fact, we've got folks out there right now removing some of the material under the box, or under the bridge, and removing, we've gotta kinda dig out the material on either side of the abutments to get that ready. We're hoping to begin the process of placing the flow-befill concrete on Monday, so that we can get that part of it done, let that cure, so that we can start building that up, and hopefully get that road reopened as soon as possible. Having the KDOT reps see that before we start, I think is, is a good thing. So the timing of that's really well. In addition to Idaho Road, we've just, well, we should be finishing today the rebuild of a mile of Texas Road. That road was literally destroyed, that first mile south of Rock Creek, and so we have, we have rebuilt that, and we should be installing entrances. I believe the schedule for that was today, to get that done, so that project would be off our, off our plate. And then, we continue to work on Nevada Road, south of the low-water crossing near Rock Creek Road. We had some string bank erosion. We acquired some native stone coming out of a basement that was being built, and so we're gonna armor that bank along there to help protect it, and we're gonna look at moving the road over and planting some additional vegetation to help with long-term support of that creek bank. If those things don't work, we'll have to take more extreme measures later on, but I'm hopeful that, that this, this provides some benefit for the citizens in the area. So needless to say, we are extremely busy. We're, we're taking on these, these major projects in addition to doing all of our, all of the other work on the roads that needs to occur due to the flooding and, and whatnot. I think if you drive the roads, you'll see that they are improving. The volume of calls that at least reached my desk have been reduced here lately, so I kinda feel like that's a, a good sign that we're, we're making progress and headed in the right direction. In addition to that, a couple of other things of note, we've had two vehicles that were, were wrecked recently. We finally got the word from K-CAM that they've both been totaled, and so we've started the process to ask for pricing from a variety of, of dealerships around to be able to replace those vehicles. I'll be visiting with, with Derek in the next week or so to, to vet that, and then we'll be bringing that before you all. Yesterday, we had our initial Public Works Safety Committee meeting retreat, where we brainstormed some ideas and steps that we will follow to really create something special for this, this department that hopefully will lead over to be countywide. We don't have much in the way of policies, safety policies and that sort of thing in place. We are gonna work to remedy that, and this is gonna be an employee-led effort, so we've had some, some folks step forward to, to volunteer for that, those committees, and myself and Jeff and Peg will be supporting them and, and helping them in that endeavor. So I'm, I'm really excited about that. I think it's gonna pay dividends for us in the long run. We've, we've been very fortunate that we've had very few accidents, but we want, you know, we wanna make sure that that continues. The most important thing in my mind is that everybody that shows up to work goes home in the same condition they left, that they arrived in, so that's something that, that we're doing. Also, on Monday, we had a pre-construction meeting for Fifty-Nine and Kingman Road, that intersection project. We met right here in the commission chambers and discussed steps in that process. That project isn't getting kickoff until mid-August. They keep pushing it back. They don't, their, their thinking is they don't wanna open everything up and then have to wait on the asphalt contractor, and so they are waiting on the, you know, a specific date from the asphalt contractor, and then they're gonna back up so that they have enough time to get that work done. And so, working days have already started, and so we're keeping that, keeping track of that. They still, no matter when they start, they still have to finish by roughly Thanksgiving, and we're gonna hold them to that, and I think it'll be just fine. Last week, we had a pre-construction conference on the Pawnee Road project, the bridge project, and that is scheduled to start, I believe, on Monday is when they'll start mobilizing for that. So, two of the bigger projects that we've got going on are almost ready to start.
Hey, Rick, before you move on to Janet, something in the last week I wanna, wanna talk about, Commissioner Dickinson received a call from one of her constituents regarding an issue they were having, and she reached out to me, and I reached out to David, and David personally contacted the individual, and, and we've got the situation resolved. And, and the reason I, I wanna bring that up is, you know, that's really exactly how I envisioned the process working, and it was perfect. The individual is incredibly satisfied. David did a heck of a good job. It's really how, when you envision good, efficient government, particularly our model of government, I mean, it, you couldn't have asked for anymore, so appreciate David. He, with everything on his plate, he still doesn't hesitate to get in on a personal level and engage, and, and just wanna, to bring that up publicly, because that, that is what we do in all of our departments. I mean, I see this happen on a weekly basis, and so I, I think if, if people are having issues, they will find that we will be responsive to those issues, and we can't and won't always be able to do everything that everybody wants us to do, but we can be responsive and give them an explanation at the very least. If we can't help them, here's why we can't help them, or if we can, we will. And so, very pleased with the work David has been doing.
As, as Derek mentioned, your budget publication will be in the newspaper tomorrow, and we'll be set for your August seventh budget hearing at six o'clock. Like Derek said, we're gonna be, I've still been reviewing, making sure everything's correct in it, but Derek and I are gonna be going through that very thoroughly, so we make sure that everything that you guys planned for is, is in there. So, I'll just remind everybody that all the budget publications are coming out in the newspaper. They've been very busy fielding all of those this week from my office, so as you have constituents that have questions about any of those budgets, they can feel free to come to my office and see all of those budgets. I have the majority of the cities already, and all the townships, cemetery districts, fire districts, all those, and I'll be happy to show those and talk with someone about any questions they have. I just think it's important for citizens to remember that your mill levy is not just what the county puts on you, but also your, your small city, your school district, any cemetery districts, all those other things comprise your whole mill levy, so I think that's important for citizens to remember. So, as you have questions about that, please feel free to direct those people to me. I'm happy to answer their questions about it and, and walk them through that.
Larry, we're in staff reports. Did you have anything you wanted to put in there? Yeah, you're Larry, right?
What I would have to announce this morning is that we will have a study session on the updating of our comprehensive plan and zoning regulations relative to renewable energy, so it's on August the eighth, six forty-five.
At six forty-five?
Six forty-five.
Are you just gonna have one?
Excuse me?
You're just gonna have one? You think you'll only need one?
That's all is planned right now, but there may be additional in addition to the public hearing requirements. I would like to.
Thanks, Mr. Commissar, comments and board reports.
I attended eight meetings the last week or so, but we're gonna comment on Texas Too bad FEMA didn't say it ahead of time, because they won't believe what was wrong with it now. The guys did a heck of a job. I mean, I've lived there, I ain't gonna say a lot of years, and that's the best that road's ever looked, and the ditches are in good shape, it's built up a big crown. It just, it's, and they did something they've never done before. When they tried to fix that road, they've always tried to work with the rock instead of bringing in the dirt, and this time they brought in the dirt and got it all built up. And another thing, the neighbors putting in a lake on the one side of the road, and that's gonna help divert some of that water away from that road now, so we're hoping that'll help, too. It'll help him, 'cause he'll get a lot of water for his lake, but it'll take a lot of water out of our ditches and that road down there, so the guys did a good job. Anybody get a chance to go out there and look at it, the guy spent a week in there, every day hard, and it looked really nice. The only other thing I might mention, I mentioned the other day, and did put out a press release on it today, Tuesday, August the sixth, nine o'clock in the morning in this room, Barbara Anderson from the Kansas Department of Commerce will be here giving a presentation on, to help small communities obtain funding for projects, and it's some new funding that the, Commerce, not Chamber of Commerce, State Commerce Department has come up with this year, and she'll be here, it's open to anyone that wants to attend, don't have to RSVP or anything, we got plenty of room in there, so, but it'd be free to the public, and I know her main reason is to fill you with information, but also she's wanting to set up appointments with small communities and towns, so she can personally go out and meet with each individual community and tell them what she can do for them, and she's, seems to be real anxious to, to promote this. I've run into her, she was down to Rantoul promoting it down there, and didn't get into a lot, she didn't have a lot of time, you know, during the meeting to get into the details, and she'll do a lot more of that on, like I said, August sixth, Tuesday morning, here in this room at nine o'clock.
I just, a couple of updates on the, the city of Ottawa. They are, they continue to restructure their debt in order to get themselves in a better position financially. Monday, at the study session, they had an update on potholes, which seems like a crazy thing to be doing on the end of July, but of course, it's been kind of a crazy year, so, and in fact, as I was driving into the meeting this morning, they were on Main Street in South Ottawa, working on potholes, which definitely needs to be done out there. They actually have their budget meeting on the same day we do, at their regular commission meeting at seven o'clock. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, we, we get phone calls about ditches from our constituents, and we haven't said it publicly, that we, but we have been listening to you, it definitely is on our agenda, but it's something that is, just can't be a priority at this point until we get everything else in order, and then we will definitely look at ditches. And what we need to do is maybe make some kind of a master plan for ditches, but anyway, it's, it's not something that we've just flipped under the table, it is definitely on our, our radar, and when we get there, we will definitely get there.
I attended Frank County Fair two or three nights, had a good turnout, a lot of people there, I think it was a successful fair. I think they put up a lot, a lot more netting, so a lot of the show arenas and places were more comfortable, and the barbecue had a cooling tent, which really made it pretty nice there at the fair. And this Friday, Coffey is introducing Crystal Anderson, who's the new CEO of ECAN. She took over for Richard Jackson, longtime CEO of that group, and that's all I have.
Last Thursday, I attended the Prairie Falls Audit Board Meeting at Pat Gardner. We've lost some sponsors, numbers are tough, the list continues to work, trying to make it work, but pretty stressful right now for her, but she's, and her staff's doing a good job of trying to, to raise money and make it work out, so that's all I have right now. Just made me think, David talking about the roads, just wanna put out there, it's basically Highway fifty, if you're driving it, be alert, the deer are really moving. I got one yesterday, and actually, there was no damage to my vehicle, and hopefully limited damage to the deer, it kept going, but then I had another one come out in front of me this morning when I was driving in here, so they're definitely moving, so, so be alert, watch for them. Right now, we have a commission meeting on July the thirty-first, study session on August the fifth, and that's the only thing I see coming up in the near future, so if there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, sir, second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Or adjourn?